And I gave you two mics if you want to hold on to one.
That's what I think I'll probably do. That's exactly what I thought I'd do.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor's Education Awards. This is the spring edition as we are close to the end of the school year, believe it or not. If you're a parent, you know that we are close to the end of the school year. I call it mayhem. It's like December, but multiplied and 1,000 degrees hotter. So, but thank you for coming here tonight because we are glad to have you here. And for the first time, Mayor Bacon is not able to be here with us tonight. He sends his very deep regrets. He has been recovering from some health issues. He is doing fantastic, but he does need to rest a little bit more. Hopefully, he'll make an appearance towards the end of this. We'll see. But he is not able to be here for the duration of this. So, he does want to send his regrets and his apologies and let everyone know that he has never missed one of these and he hates to miss it tonight. But I'm Tyrian Nellowitz and I am Mayor Protem and I represent Ward Three on the City Council. That includes Smyrna Elementary School and Campbell High School. And I'm happy and it is my privilege to be presiding over these tonight. So, we're going to get started. Well, first, I do, I want to make a couple of announcements. I want to let everyone know and I hope that you've been able to enjoy the snacks out front. We have had treats from Chick-fil-A and McIntyre's Bakery. And if you are an educator, tomorrow, Tuesday, May 2nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. is Chick-fil-A Teacher Appreciation Day. So, if you have a valid, if you're a teacher, administrator, any kind of educator, if you have a valid school ID, bring that to Chick-fil-A and you can enjoy free chicken. So, that's a great way to eat more chicken when you're not paying for it. I also want to welcome some representatives from the Cobb County Board of Education here tonight. We have Chris Ragstale, who is the superintendent from Cobb County. And I believe Dr. Kevin Daniel, his chief of staff, is here with us tonight. Ed Wagner, who is the assistant superintendent for high schools. Is Mr. Wagner here? And we'll recognize all these folks again at the end of the evening. Dr. Robert Downs, who is the assistant superintendent for middle schools. We want to recognize him. Dr. Belinda Walters Brazil, who is assistant superintendent for elementary schools. And then, I'm not sure if Susan Thayer is here yet. I know she always makes it a point to be at this event also, so we will welcome her when she arrives also. And she is the Cobb County School Board Representative for Post Two, which encompasses southeastern Cobb County. We are going to start tonight actually with Whitfield Academy. They have several representatives here tonight. And Tyrone Johnson is their Director of Student Life. I would like to bring him up if he is here. And Mr. Johnson, if you would like to introduce your honorees tonight.
Representing I volunteer, parent volunteer, Karen Peterson, will you please come up? Not sure if my other two are here, but representing the staff member, Amelia Carmichael. Is she here? And lastly, our student representative Christina Hicks. Is she here? First, I want to talk about Kara Peterson. Kara Peterson has lead or co-led the PAC Parenting for the last three years. She is also the co-chair of the new External Marketing Committee for Whitfield. She was also seventh grade basketball team mom, which is important. Next year, she was, next year, she would be the eighth grade WPA grade rep. She leads spirit for the boys soccer team and is on campus with kids all three schools. She helped with school events like Lower School Fine Arts Day and all sports team and anything a teacher asks her to help with. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
From a young lady Christina, she is a senior this year. Just some of her honors and awards. She was given the Teachers Award for Yearbook Two, Teachers Award for Math, Excellence Award in Christian Thought. She also was awarded the Timothy Award, the National Honor Society, National Society of High School Scholars, Homecoming Court Queen for Ninth, Tenth, and Twelfth Grade. Extracurricular Clubs, she's in Honor Council from the tenth through the twelfth grade, New Student Welcoming Committee, Fifth Grade Peer Tutoring, Yearbook Staff, and the National of Future Scientists in Technology. She is also varsity cheerleading from ninth through 12th, varsity football cheerleading, and varsity competition cheerleading. She is also, she has also committed to attending Georgia taking the fall, so we're very proud of Christina.
Thank you so much. The next school, we're going to go a little bit out of order for the first few schools tonight and then we'll get back to the order in which your program is presented. But I'd like to invite King Springs Elementary School to come up here. And this is a bittersweet one because as many of you know, Lynda Keeney, the principal of King Springs, is going to be retiring at the end of this year. And so, I would like to invite some folks from King Springs up, including Principal Keeney. And then, I will let her introduce her honorees and maybe you want to say something. I don't know.
Every time I try to say something, I cry. Because I left, I locked my brother up, so he's, it's my fault, he's not here. I didn't want any smart remarks. I've got the floor. I wonder if he sees this on TV. He doesn't, does he? No. No, sometimes we try to keep a lot of things from him. It's difficult. You don't know what it's like to get to work in your community. Because I believe, and I think Max would agree with me, that so go your schools, so goes your community. And it doesn't matter how much business you've got, what the housing boom looks like, people are looking for good schools. And so, I was the principal at Blackwell Elementary and when the current superintendent called me then and said, "You want to go home?", I thought, "Yeah, I want to go home and I want to live in my community." And I like it when kids come up to me in the grocery store and look at me like, "You mean you go to the grocery store? They don't put you in a box at the school at the end of every Friday?" I like that and I like watching them grow. And I've decided to retire. I've been at King Springs for 10 years and it's really, really, really bittersweet. And I'll probably cry most of the time and think, "What the heck did I do?", but I think it's too, too, I can't put that horse back in the, in the barn. We live in an absolutely wonderful community and it's been my privilege to work with principals that care more about kids than you can even imagine. And this is a great community. And there's no other community that does the Mayor's Awards. And so, when your child or your volunteer or your staff member receives that, just know how really, really special that is. Because in all, all of the communities that we've got in Cobb County, not one other one has their municipality that lets us recognize those folks that are outstanding. So, I've been blessed and as Winnie the Pooh said, how lucky I am to have something that's so hard to say goodbye to. So, I'm going to do my thank you. You probably wish you'd not asked me to say anything. Because I just keep talking. But it has been a pleasure and I won't go far. People said, "Are you moving?", and I said, "Heh, no, I'm not moving. I'm staying home. I made God a promise in 1987. If he'd ever let me see the streetlights of Smyrna, Georgia again, I'd never leave." So, at any rate, I'd like to call my King Springs honorees up. Carla Rosier is my teacher. Diana Overton is my volunteer and Lydia Dunson is my student. This is Ms. Lydia Dunson. This is Lydia Dunson and she is an absolutely outstanding young lady. I don't know how she does as many things as she does. She's been at King Springs, she was in the first grade. She's in Melody Makers for Fourth and Fifth. She's in Beta Club in Fourth and Fifth. She's a Safety Patrol. She's on the honor roll. She's in our Target Program. She's got artwork displayed at the Maple House, don't you? And in the community, she works in Girl Scouts, as an active member of St. Thomas Catholic Church, and Cotillion Club. We are very proud of Lydia and we got lots of these at King Springs. So, congratulations, Lydia. This is Carla Rosier and she's been a friend. I graduated from high school with her mother and daddy. I don't know how her daddy raised such a fine young woman. But she got a great mama. It's really funny. Many of you may know that Mayor Bacon loves to go read at the schools and he's been doing that for as long, practically as long as he's been mayor. He goes and you just pray, "God, please don't let him be inappropriate." And so, when Carla's daughter was in pre-K, he read and he was reading a story about bees or nectar or something and he said, "Nectar." And the four-year-old, Carla's daughter, who now is in television in Knoxville, Tennessee, said, "That's nectar, Mayor Bacon." And he's never let her forget that. So, Carla has been in education a long time, but we were lucky enough to steal her from Nikah Jack Elementary 12 years ago. And she's taught third grade and she's taught fourth grade. She runs our after-school program, which is, I think we're close to the biggest one in the district. I don't know how she does it. She puts in easily a 13-hour day every day. She's one that you can always go to to get the pulse of the building and she's always one that if she's got something that she's worried about or a complaint, she's got a solution for it. And that's what I like. So, she's been a friend and a colleague and I love her and congratulations. And if you want to know why SLOSS passed so quickly in the Smyrna area and that the post that was over at King Springs K1 passed by about 90%, I think, it's this lady right here. This is Diane Overton and she has been our school council president for the last two years, I think you took that. I don't think, they'll let you do it next year. Anyway, she got a group together and I mean, they went out and worked for the schools in Smyrna to make sure that we're getting new schools here and getting the things we need. And she, along with one of my other school council members, just really, really worked hard and we appreciate all she did to help SLOSS five pass. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Keeney. And thank you, everyone from King Springs. We'll do a quick picture. The next school we're going to honor tonight, this is also going to be a bittersweet evening for them. I would like to invite Principal Carrie Schrock from the International Academy of Smyrna so they can recognize their volunteers and student and staff tonight.
Good evening. It's just not the same without Mayor Bacon and my backup. He's my hugger when I get up here. I get all emotional. What a privilege and a pleasure to be always embraced and included in the Smyrna community. So, thank you for that. We, at IAS, always have, it's a good problem to have, we have so many incredible volunteers and members of our staff and students to recognize that it's, it's a hard decision. And I know that it's the same in many of your schools as well. The student that I would like to recognize this evening, I'll share some words that were part of her nomination. Michaela Carroll, one of our eighth grade students, is academically gifted, approachable, funny, quick-witted, and my favorite word that was used to describe her, savvy. That's very telling, is it not? Beyond the classroom, she is a force to be reckoned with on the softball field. I understand quite a strong pitcher, yes. But an IB education goes beyond self. It encourages students to identify their place in the community, both locally and globally. And part of the recognition to celebrate her this evening is her effort in volunteer service in the community. She spent up to 30 hours at the Atlanta Community Food Bank, but it wasn't just her power as an individual. She motivated her entire softball team to come and be a part of that. So, she's a mover, she's a shaker, she's a changer of the world. She is an incredible leader among her peers and she is the epitome of what an IAS student represents. She is bright, driven, and destined for greatness. Congratulations, Michaela. Cheat cheats, because I know I always forget the details. Our teacher, honoree this evening, is our fifth grade teacher. She has taught fourth grade for us, went away and couldn't stay away, had to come back to be a part of the incredible team that we have at IAS. She is our fifth grade team leader. The IB Primary Years Program culminates in an IB exhibition, which is a celebration of all IB that students experience K through five. And she has taken on the challenge of facilitating that for 104 fifth grade students who each work together with a mentor and you can imagine all the moving parts that go with that. She stops at the end of the day, throws on her sneakers, and runs with the kids for Kilometer Kids. She's a part of our school leadership team. She runs our Red Ribbon Campaign each year and she serves as a very valuable new teacher mentor. So, congratulations, Alicia Johnson. Our volunteer is a force to be reckoned with in her own right. She is available at the drop of a hat as a member of PTA. She single-handedly has fed our staff and you know faculty meetings at the end of the day, if you feed them, they will come and they will be happy. She has taken on that challenge this year. She's volunteered for our annual Spring Gala fundraiser each year and she is just truly committed, like most of our volunteers are, but she is ever-present. Had two boys come through the school and we are just so grateful for everything that you do. So, thank you. Angela Green.
Thank you so much. I know they're going to want to get lots of pictures. That may be a new record. Thank you so much. Thank you. We'll go back to the beginning of the program now and I would like to bring up Dr. Robert Babbay from Argyle Elementary. I'm sorry, I promoted you. But thank you, Principal Babbay.
Good evening. 10 years ago, when I took over at Argyle, I didn't need these reading glasses and now I can't see without them. Unfortunately, my student representative couldn't be here tonight, but I really want to read this to you because she truly is an amazing, amazing young lady. So, let's pretend she's here and I'm going to go ahead and read. First, a fifth grade student, Mariyama Dia. This extraordinary young lady came to Argyle last year from Africa. She quickly learned how to speak English and now, as a fifth grader, speaks fluent English and reads above grade level. Not surprising for an individual that also knows how to speak Fulani, French, and Spanish. Mariyama is extremely hardworking and conscientious, striving to do her best each day. One of Mariyama's teachers described her as an amazing young lady who inspires us all with her willingness to care. She's a fabulous role model who possesses integrity, intelligence, kindness, and unending patience. At school, Mariyama is an anchor on our school morning news show and a Safety Patrol. In her spare time, Mariyama enjoys solving math problems and playing with her two brothers and one sister. Congratulations. Next, my Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Carleen Creary. Carleen's been working as a kindergarten para-professional at Argyle for the past three and a half years. She's a teacher, mother, and friend to many of our students and staff that she associates with each day. Kindergarten teacher Nell Wright states, "Carleen goes above and beyond what's expected and does what's needed to meet the needs of her students. Some of her duties include engaging students in instruction, tutoring, or providing supervision in a group setting such as the cafeteria. Whatever the situation is, Ms. Creary is always there to support and make education fun for her students. Carleen has three children, all that attend Cobb County schools. When she's not at school, Ms. Creary enjoys spending time with her family and friends and always looks forward to meeting and serving others. Her motto is, 'To teach is to love.' And because of this, she's pursuing further studies in education and hopes to become a classroom teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Creary." Finally, I'd like to recognize Argyle's Volunteer of the Year, Ms. Maggie Detmar. Four years ago, Maggie came to me with an idea to start a foundation at Argyle. Now, under her direction, the school's foundation is being able to contribute donations and dollars to support many of our academic and social events. Maggie was also instrumental in starting Argyle's first food pantry and uniform closet. On a daily basis, Maggie works closely with our families to help them out with hotel, food, or gas vouchers. We say thank you to Maggie Detmar for all that she's done in supporting Argyle's students, staff, and family.
Let's get a picture of everyone. And I've got a nugget. Thank you so much. Next, we would like to recognize Belmont Hills Elementary School and I'd like to invite Principal Bertha Nelson up to recognize her student, faculty, and volunteers.
Thank you. Will the recipients from Belmont Hills please make their way up to the front, please? We are going to start with this young lady right over here. I'm going to put her right there so everybody can see you. Okay. So, our student recipient has been at Belmont since kindergarten. Throughout this time, she has shown dedications to her academics as well as being a leader in her school and in her community. In the classroom, her teachers state that Anna is a model student and a wonderful example of a leader in the classroom. Anna is always willing to help anyone who needs a hand. She is patient, supportive, and in tune with the feelings of her peers. Her calm and sweet demeanor makes her highly respected and loved by her classmates. Her achievements extend beyond the classroom as well. She's very highly active in all of the different activities that we have at Belmont Hills. If there's something going on after school, Anna is a part of it. She is, she was a Science Olympiad, drum club, chorus, soccer, you name it, she was there. So, her goal, though, is to become a teacher one day. And I have no doubt that she's going to become a great teacher. So, I proudly present Ms. Anna Corillo with the Students' Mayor's Award. Next up, hang on. Because unlike the rest of us, we can't read, so our font is like 18 now. All right. So, our next up is Ms. Hill. So, Ms. Hill, come on up here. So, Ms. Hill is our teacher recipient. She's been teaching for over 19 years in Cobb County and this year and for the past few years, she's been in kindergarten and she is the most amazing kindergarten teacher that you have ever seen. She's the lead teacher for the grade level. She's also our soccer coach this year for the girls' team and a trainer for the Science Olympiad. And also this year, she has been what I like to call a model classroom for other kindergarten teachers to come and see her with our new literacy program that we've been working on this year for the county. When I asked her coworkers to describe her, they had the following to say. "Ms. Hill is a leader, innovator in the classroom, and a friend to all. She strives each day to create and implement meaningful lessons that reach the needs of each learner in her classroom. She is someone that you can come to for questions, concerns, or a shoulder to lean on. I can truly say that she is the most helpful, compassionate, and hard-working individual that I've had the pleasure to work with." So, Ms. Hill, it gives me great pleasure to present you with the Mayor's Award. All right. And then, finally, this young gentleman here. Mr. Scoggins. And I've used this quote before, but I'm going to use it again with him. "You make a living by what you get, but you make a life by what you give." And Mr. Scoggins is our volunteer and he exemplifies that statement. Mr. Scoggins has been at Belmont Hills and we have the great fortune of having him as our volunteer. He is so giving of himself. He is faithful member of our school council. He volunteers his time with our students as a reading mentor and he's been a part of our school for as long as I've been at Belmont Hills and way before that. When Mr. Scoggins walks into the room, he's like a rock star and the kids just light up to see him. So, he is a celebrity reader of sorts. He's such a celebrity that he has a book that was written about him. And I have it here for him. Our book about Mr. Scoggins. If you ever get a chance, it's going to be a bestseller. So, Mr. Scoggins, this is for you. We kid him because he started volunteering, I think, and it was like in the third or fourth grade. And he says that every other year or so, he's demoted down a grade. And so, we're hoping, now, he's in first grade this year, so we're hoping that next year, he graduates and he gets to go to the next grades. So, kindergarten next year. We're going to work with him. So, Mr. Scoggins, we love you and we thank you for everything that you do for Belmont Hills.
Thank you so much. Now, we have Green Acres Elementary School with Principal Ashley Mize. Oh, picture, I'm out of order. Thank you so much, everyone. Now, I'd like to invite Principal Mize up and she will introduce her student, staff, and volunteer honorees.
Thank you. If I could get our Green Acres recipients to come on up? Oh, good. I thought our sweet student was not going to be here tonight. You went up safe, didn't you? Oh, I'm so glad you're here. All right. Well, I have only been at Green Acres for two months as the principal, but I am so honored to honor these three ladies right here because they are amazing. When I asked our staff to give me some recommendations, I got so many recommendations, but these ladies right here all got multiple recommendations to be honored by the mayor. So, I'm very proud to start with Sanai Crowder. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about Sanai. Sanai, and tell us if this is the truth, this has been a much better year for you, right? So, Sanai has had a rough time and she turned it around in fifth grade. So, I wanted to honor a student that had worked very hard to turn it around. Sometimes, we always pick the students who had all As and make great choices every day, but you know what? She started doing that in fifth grade. So, this is what her teacher said about Sanai. "Sanai is a fifth grade role model for other students. She had a challenging fourth grade year, but turned it around. Sanai is now very passionate about school. She cares about her learning and works hard to achieve academic success, especially in math." Is that right? You love math? "Sanai has the potential to be a class leader. She's willing to help others meet their academic goals. Sanai, we are very proud to present you with the Mayor's Award." Sanai, we are very proud to present you with the Mayor's Award."[598.04][598.04](APPLAUSE) Ms. Kroll. All right, this lady right here, come on up. All right, this lady. Ah, you make me cry. All right, so this lady was nominated by seven staff members.[622.04][622.04](LAUGHTER) And I had no idea all the things she does for us. Ms. Kroll has been with us, is it 10 years? 10 years, and is an ESOL teacher. She teaches our students at our second language learners. But that is not all she does. She obviously helps us with translation all the time. She supports our front office staff in the afternoons. She helps in every way we ask, and I've been told you are a model of ethical, work ethic, and of positive attitude, and I see that every day in you. You always have a smile on your face, and you work very hard for our students and to support our staff in every way you can and our parents. So we are honored, and I'm so excited to present you with the Mayor's Award.[672.75][672.75](APPLAUSE) Come on up, Crystal. All right, Crystal, this is a former Green Acres student who is our volunteer recipient. So how cool is that? She comes from a family of volunteers. Her mothers are at school almost every day. Just right back there, wave, Mom. Hi, Beloisa. All right, so Crystal was nominated by several staff members as well, and Crystal is still a college student, and she does many volunteer things for us. She works Fall Festival. She has helped with our staff appreciation lunches and other activities. She has helped with our perfect attendance certificates. Basically, anything we ask her to do, she comes and does for us. Crystal, Green Acres loves you, and we thank you for everything you do, and we are proud to present you with the Mayor's Award.[731.62][731.62](APPLAUSE)
All right, let's get a picture of these wonderful ladies.[740.66][740.66](MORNING LAUGHTER) Congratulations, everyone.[767.54][767.54](APPLAUSE) Next, I'd like to invite Principal Adam Hill from Nikajack Elementary School. They had a lot of runners out on Saturday morning.[778.04][778.04](LAUGHTER)
Good, I have no idea. Good evening![784.32][784.32](LAUGHTER) I'd love to call up my recipients, my nominees. Mr. Shane Hayes, our volunteer. Alex Hall, where is he? Come on up here. Good-looking, sharp-dressing thing you, and Ms. Cynthia Wood. How's it going?[799.66][799.66](LAUGHTER) I'll start with you. You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Good. You hear that? Yes, sir. Big smile on his face. See, that's why he's standing up here tonight.
That's right.
This is a model right here. This is a role model. And we have six homerooms in fifth grade. We have seven teachers, and unanimously, they were able to tell me, "Mr. Hill, that Mayor's Award needs to go to this gentleman right here, Alex Hall."
Awesome.
So I'm going to read to you what they wrote about you, okay? I thought it was important for it to come from them. And I learned a long time ago to write it and come up here and read it, otherwise, I'll say a lot more than I should and be up here for a lot longer than I should. "From his eager outlook towards learning to his warm good-morning hugs, Alex is the prime example of great character. He has a happy, inviting spirit that welcomes all, and his positive attitude rubs off on all that he encounters. Alex attacks the day with an open mind, and he is always willing to help and encourage his peers. He has been a part of the Nikajack family since first grade, is that right?
Yes.
And from day one, he has been nothing short of a pleasure to have as a student. I did reach out to teachers that you've had in the past, and they all agree, and they were all excited that you were here tonight. Alex excels academically in every subject area, and the excellent work Alex does is simply a reflection of his great attitude and effort. This fifth grader is the definition of a respectful, responsible role model. Alex, young man, we are so proud of you. We expect great things of you in life, and we cannot wait to see what all you achieve. It is my honor to award you with the Mayor's Award."[910.04][910.04](APPLAUSE) And now, on to our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Cynthia Wood, third-grade teacher extraordinaire. Currently a third-grade teacher with leadership aspirations, she is our current Teacher of the Year. Cynthia has deep roots in Smyrna. I'm learning that she either knows somebody, or she actually knows them, but she is, when I heard Lenakini talking about working and loving your community, Cynthia is just that, and so we love that about her as well. Cynthia is an awesome teacher. She is calm, caring, and patient. She doesn't like being talked about. She has a good sense of humor and strong desire to see her students succeed regardless of their background, ability level, or home life. Cynthia serves on our school council and has previously served as grade-level team leader. She has hosted and mentored college student teachers. This year, she has organized the school-wide initiative for Allergy and Asthma Awareness Month. That would be the month of May, if you didn't know. Teal is the color. She is always willing to do anything asked of her without question. She does it with a smile. She works very hard for her students and the parents she currently serves, but something very special Cynthia does is she keeps in close contact with her previous students. She checks in on them and makes sure, and makes efforts to let them know she's still here, she still cares, and she wants the very best for them. So thank you, Cynthia, for being such a hard-working, caring individual and role model, and it is my honor to award you the Teacher Mayor's Award.[1022.12][1022.12](APPLAUSE) And one of the students in Cynthia's class is this young man's son. This is our PTA president, Shane Hayes. He's got two boys at Nikajack, one in kindergarten and one in third grade. His wife Connie is here tonight. Did Judy make it? Judy Kent, I want you to know, is his mother-in-law, but she was our Nikajack Volunteer of the Year for the district. And I'm telling you all that because within this Hayes family, let me tell you, there's a lot of goodness and kindness. There are some happy folks that are full of, they are some happy folks that are full of positivity, and I can't tell you how much you and your family, Shane, are appreciated. So as I told you, Shane serves as our PTA president, and he is like no other that I've ever worked with before. And I've worked with some good PTA presidents. As principals, our buildings are our second homes for us. We worry and care for that building, just like we do our own personal home. You know, there's the roof, there's paint, carpeting, there's the entire grounds. Those grounds are massive. Shane treats our school like it is his second home. He volunteers as PTA president, and that volunteerism has included organizing beautification days on our weekends, the trimming of trees and bushes. He shows up with plows, blowers, and every tool imaginable. He has ideas to move this structure. "Adam, if we just move this over here, it's going to open up the field." So, "Sure, Shane, let's move that greenhouse," and you're right. "Well, now we need to take this fence down and rebuild it, and we're going to pay for that as PTA." "Okay," and he's right. And he's always thinking about all of the students, not just his two boys. And that's what a PTA president does for a school, and so that's what, I couldn't ask for more. You're constantly looking for ways to improve our school in any way you can. Shane, you are so appreciated, and I really could go on and on about all he's done for our school, including leading up our Davis Dads, our Dad Initiative of getting in there and reading and being role models as men. So Shane, thank you. You are appreciated. I wish I could duplicate you. Nikajack is incredibly fortunate to have you, and good luck to whoever is following in your footsteps. It's my honor to award you with our Volunteer Mayor's Award.[1172.82][1172.82](APPLAUSE)
All right, picture time. Wait, wait, Shane, don't leave.[1181.04][1181.04](LAUGHTER) All right, next, I would like to invite Principal Jeffrey Mosley from Norton Park.[1196.66][1196.66](APPLAUSE)
Good afternoon. I'd like to call my recipients up. Barrick, Ms. Vega, Ms. Ayers. As they're coming up, we've kind of taken a phrase from a TV show that this is us. I haven't really seen it all, but I'm hearing it's pretty interesting. And so, so we've kind of coined that term, and so as we look at our family and our school, we realize that this is truly us. This is a representation of who we are and what we do daily. Barrick, our student representative here, representative here, oh, record that.[1238.04][1238.04](LAUGHTER) He, I could talk about academics. I could talk about all the great things he's done, and I will. I would talk about how he's in target and how he strives and he stands out in his classroom, but more importantly, he has a heart of giving and service. And for me, that's important when I see a fourth grader that gives the time to volunteer on our campus cleanup days or to come in on our remodel days and do that, and he's a part of the green team. So that means every morning, he's collecting and he's helping us to keep our school a green school. He has a tremendous heart that is contagious, and I believe that comes from his family. I see that he has his representatives over there, and they are also with him, and they stand with him every day. And Barrick, I am honored to be a part of your life, and I'm honored to have you at Norton Park because you make the difference and you are the difference. This one right here. So I'm just going to put it all out there. We normally stand on that side, but we got hijacked today because all of my people over there, that's her family, and that's why she, that's why she's standing here today. Not only is she meeting the needs of every student in our school because she's our science lab teacher, but she's pushing the STEM initiatives. She's organized a science week. She even ran this weekend with Girls on the Run. I got the first mile in, and I ducked off, and she kept going, so. But her entire family supports us. They're a part of our school, and because they support her, they support us, and she is awesome. I could not think of a more deserving person to receive this award tonight because she truly goes the mile. Her husband is, he's a part of the family too, just not on payroll, but he's there with us as well. And Gretchen just has truly been a standout person, and you know, in most schools, you see PE, that's where all the kids want to go. Well, she's in a strong first in science lab because that's where all of her students want to be. And so you ask them, "What's your favorite specials?" "Science lab." So that's because of Gretchen, and Gretchen, thank you. We could not do this without you, without you. Ms. Vega, so you know, oftentimes, you know, we sometimes have an issue with getting people to come in midday because it's like, "What do you want us to do? How many people do you need? What's the task going to include?" Well, Ms. Vega says, "I got you." She gets a phone call, and she shows up with the cavalry. She pulls up, and out come four or five other women, and out with the Fab Five, and they come out and they get it done. They walk into the school, they are anxious, they are eager, and they will not leave a job incomplete. You know, that just goes back to the heart that she has and the dedication that she has, not only for student success, but to see our school succeed. And Ms. Vega truly exemplifies what I would love to see in every parent in our school, and I thank you for your time, your service, and all that you do.
Thank you so much. Next, I would like to invite Principal Tammy Watson from Norton Park Elementary. Russell Elementary, I'm reading all, it's probably time for those glasses all these folks are talking about.[1482.04][1482.04](LAUGHTER)
Thank you, but I'll keep Russell. If my recipients could come up, I know I saw my volunteer and my student is coming up, but I'm not quite sure if I saw my teacher. Mom, you can stay here with him because he may not, he may leave me. This is very special to me because Alex has been at Russell for six years, and he is just awesome. I mean, I don't even know how to say it. He started at Russell very shy, not speaking, pretty much staying to himself, and now he is like the leader of his class. He listens to the teacher, he takes the role up, he even says hello, Ms. Watson now. You just don't know what a privilege that is. He is definitely ready for middle school. I'm going to miss him, I'm going to miss his mom, but when I tell you that he is a special, special child, and he's got wonderful gifts, and when he grows up, he is just going to be a wonderful man. So Alex, it has been my pleasure and honor to get to know you.[1574.16][1574.16](APPLAUSE) Okay, I'm going to go real quick because he might leave me. So his mom is up here, but Ms. Luff, if you would come up. I am truly going to miss this lady. I love her. That's all I can say. She has been with me through everything. She's the kind of parent that comes in your office and closes your door and says, "Let's be real. Let's be real." I'm going to tell that, yes, let's be real. We've had very candid conversations, but those conversations have seen me through. It's made me a better principal. She has been over PTA. She has been a substitute. She has been a part-time employee. She has been everything you could possibly at Russell. And now, I'm sad that her youngest child is leaving me, and she says she will not come back. But I know her husband, and her husband likes me, so, right? Raise your hand, there you go. So she might just be back, but she is awesome. She's our fifth-grade chairperson, and I don't know what I'm going to do without you. I just think you're awesome, and it's just been a privilege for me just to get to know you. Thank you. She is lucky.
Okay. Yes, we will give.
Before Christopher leaves.
Yes.
He's doing so good.
He's doing awesome.
Look, Christopher Camps. Alex.
Alex. Thank you so much. Alex, you did a great job. Next, we have Smyrna Elementary, and I'd like to invite Principal Brett Ward up to recognize his honorees tonight.[1720.04][1720.04](APPLAUSE)
If we could ask our Smyrna recipients to please come down.[1727.82][1727.82](MORNING LAUGHTER) It is truly an honor to be here with my colleagues tonight to recognize all of these individuals, and I want to start with this young man here, Benjamin. We all call him TJ, and you see this million-dollar smile. We get that every single day, every single minute. And his family, they're all here, and they all have this amazing smile. So TJ is one of our fifth graders, and so his two teachers, Mr. York and Ms. Grayson, had some wonderful things to say about you, so I want to share those. TJ starts every single day with, "Good morning, what are we going to learn today?" These words always come with a bright smile that greets us, and when he comes into the classroom, he's always very excited about learning. He's the type of students that teachers dream of having in class. He contributes regularly to discussions. He strives for excellence on each assignment. He contributes regularly to discussions, he strives for excellence on each assignment, and he's always able to relate life experiences to the content that's being studied. Aside from maintaining all As in all of his subjects, he's also a leader, not only in the classroom, but in our school as well. At any given time, you may see TJ serving as an anchor on the morning news, acting as a tour guide for visitors to our school, reading to kindergarten classes, or tutoring others in his own grade. He's added so much joy and positive atmosphere to our classroom. We're proud of him for his amazing achievements, and we're also confident that he'll continue to attain greatness, as well as being recognized for his leadership qualities. Keep up the outstanding work, we love you. So Ms. Kristin Dabson, one of our amazing parents, I so appreciate her, we've worked together for many years, and Kristin is, she's, you know, we all have those parents on our speed dial, Kristin is one of those. She has facilitated Girls on the Run, she has been the coordinator of the fifth grade field trips, as well as other field trips. I think a year or two, she did the yearbook. There are so many things that she does. For PTA, she's on standby to always have banners designed and printed, and she just does anything that we need for her to do to make our school a better place. The staff and students and parents of our community love Kristin and all that she does, so thank you. Ms. Cindy McGonagall over here is my amazing secretary, and I have worked with her now for 11 years, 11 years, and this is Cindy's 15th year in the district, so we were talking today about all the jobs that she's done, she's halfway through her career. She's served as a parapro, she's been, worked in the media center, she's been the parent liaison, she's been the school clerk, she's worked with the guidance office, and now she's the secretary. So this is her 15th year, so I said, "Well, in the second half of your career," she's gonna be a teacher, a principal, and then, Chris, superintendent, so. We have great aspirations, Ms. Cindy McGonagall, we appreciate you.
All right, y'all know what to do, picture time. Thank you. I also want to take a moment to recognize Board Member Susan Thayer, she is in the back of the room, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for everything you do for our community. Now we have Teasley Elementary, and I would like to invite Principal Leslie Mansfield.
Thank you so much, and thank you for this opportunity to recognize some of our amazing folks. Teasley peeps, come on up, I see you. So this is Ally Bounds, Ally is our student recipient, this is Cornelia Washington, who's our staff recipient, and Mrs. Retu Shanda, who is our parent volunteer extraordinaire. So I'm gonna start with you, Ms. Retu, Ally, I'm saving you for last. So, I've been at Teasley for six years, and Retu was one of the very first people that I met when I got to Teasley, and she just is one of those people who pops up everywhere. But I do believe that she's been hired by the media specialists to just be on retainer in there. She's always seen shelving books, I think one year you were our laminating person, she's like the right-hand man for her child's teacher, she has two beautiful girls, one's in second grade, Prentia, and then one is at Campbell Middle School, Tanisha, and they are just as special as their mom. So she is one of those that you can count on for anything, she helps in the office, I mean, anywhere. She's in charge of the love offering for our custodial staff and cafeteria staff at Christmas, and just does a great job of caring for everyone, so you are treasured and appreciated and just a part of the Teasley family, so thank you for all you do. Next is Ms. Cornelia Washington, and Cornelia, I mean, everybody at Teasley is special, but you know, there are some that just kind of are a cut above in the special area. So I met Cornelia the summer that I was appointed principal at Teasley, and a Teasley parent, who is also an administrator in the district, sent me an email and she said, "You have got to meet this lady, she's looking, she's looking for a position, and she would be great anywhere," and it's just the truth. Cornelia does not look for the easy way out. She's a parapro in our special needs preschool class, half a day, and then she's ASP director as well, and both of those are challenging positions, but you do them with just this beautiful smile, and always just grace and professionalism and looking for ways to make everything better, and you do make everything better just by being a part of it, so thank you for all you do. She's just the best. All right. So this is Ally Bounds, Ally is in fifth grade this year, and I said it's my sixth year, so I started at Teasley the same time that Ally did in kindergarten. So it's just been such a privilege to watch Ally grow into such a fine young lady, and every, every single day, Ally is making the choices to do the right thing. And I asked her teacher for a few words about Ally, and I truly could not improve upon them, so Ally, just forgive me, I'm going to read what Ms. Braswell said about you. It's pretty special. "There are few students who are as deserving of the Mayor Award as Ally Bounds. Ally is an amazing scholar. She constantly amazes me with her ability to think critically and her eagerness to learn new things. Outside of the classroom, Ally is an active member of our school community. She's involved in the Reading Bowl, Science Olympiad, Rise Up, Safety Patrol, and the Teasley Trebletones." Did we miss anything? The, the news crew and the STEM codettes, so, which is a pretty awesome thing to be a part of. She performed in the talent show, she has a role in the school musical, and has for several years. Though her accomplishments are numerous, what makes Ally truly remarkable is her exceptional character. Ally is honest, kind, trustworthy, disciplined, compassionate, and perseverant. She's a great friend and an amazing role model. Ally is exceptional in every way, she's the type of student that makes the teacher's job easy. She's the one who keeps you on your toes for all the right reasons. She is the student that you hope and pray to find on your roster, she's the one you are certain you will see on TV one day because she's changed the world for the better. These accomplishments are the foundation for what is sure to be a future full of success. So, Mr. Tanner, I have great news for you, Ally is headed your way next year, unless I can find some way to keep her as mine. Ally, you are amazing, we all adore you, and thank you for being so wonderful.
Next, I would like to invite up Principal Jonathan Tanner of Campbell Middle School. And I have known one of these honorees since she was a tiny girl, so this is exciting.
Good evening, and I have my student here, do I have my faculty member, Ms. Hanson, come on up. Unfortunately, our volunteer cannot be here tonight. We are recognizing Mr. Tony Waybright, and just wanted to say a few words about him. He's not able to be here tonight because he did have, his wife had an emergency within her family, and she needed to be with her family. And then, his eighth grader, who was recognized here at the Mayor's Award in the fall, has her band concert tonight. And while he really appreciated this honor and thought it was a very important honor, he thought being with his daughter at her band concert tonight was just a little bit more important, so we need to give him a round of applause for that. Because that says a lot about what's most important to him, and it's his child and it's the school that she goes to. He has been a true advocate for my school, for our school. He has served on the school, has the chair of the school council for the past two years. He works tirelessly to get more parents involved. He shows up for every single event that we have, and constantly seeks opportunities to sing the praises of our school. And I can say honestly, you know, his student is an eighth grader this year, so he will be moving on to the high school, but I told him, and I'm gonna reiterate this to him, that he can leave knowing that he has made the school a better place because our parent involvement is way up, and largely due to his advocacy. So, thank you, Mr. Waybright, and we will get that award to him. And I have here with me, Ketchy Holmes, our student being honored tonight, and she is a true phenomenal student. We could talk all day about her academics and the fact that she's probably never made lower than an A, and she, she truly does epitomize, when you talk about being a scholar, that's Neketchi Holmes. But more than that, she's got a heart of gold, and she truly is there for her peers. She always goes out of her way to encourage others, she's a positive influence in the school. And she's also involved in several activities, such as Science Olympiad, and her team was a winning team this year. She's a National Junior Honor Society member, and she is a phenomenal writer. I've had the privilege of hearing a couple of her pieces, one of which she went to state with her Reflections Award last year for, I believe it was a poem that she wrote. And then recently, there was a district-wide STEM competition, writing competition, about why STEM for me, it was specifically for girls, and she placed second in the district for that. And she wrote very eloquently about the fact that she wants to go into neuroscience so that she can make a difference in the lives of people who suffer from neurological diseases. So, while I could go on and on about all of her achievements, I truly, it is because she is such a positive influence and that, that kind soul that you see before us, that she's truly making a difference in our school. And I know that one day, I'm gonna be looking on television and seeing how Neketchi Holmes has changed the world for the better, and I'm gonna be very proud that she was a member of our school. I also have here this evening, Ms. Ingrid Hanson, she is our media specialist, and I am truly honored to be able to recognize her publicly. She knows how much I appreciate everything she's done for the school. Many of you know that there's this movement towards learning commons, and she has really taken that on within our, what was a library, now a media center, and transforming into a learning commons. We're still raising money for that transformation, but it's because of her vision that it's happening. Thank you to our foundation for helping to make that happen as well, but truly, what's really making a difference is that she has established a media center where the students want to be. And you know, back when I was in school, the media specialists or librarians weren't always the most friendly and nice, and they wanted you in and out, but that's not the case with Ms. Hanson. So she has really made it a place that's fun to be, and she has made it a place where they want to go and read. Unlike many of the schools that are experiencing a drop in circulation, because reading, especially those books, you know, they read on technology now, that's not, you don't see that as much as you did in the past, but our circulation has increased by a lot. Give me a statistic of the last...
Well, our, our largest month to date was forty-eight fifty-two, so we circulated four thousand eight hundred and fifty-two books.
Nearly five thousand books circulating, so that's phenomenal. And to say that she's making a difference is an understatement, because to be able to inspire others to read and children to be lifelong readers, there's nothing more that you can do to really affect change in their lives. So thank you, Ms. Hanson, for all you're doing to make Campbell Middle a better place.
Thank you so much, and I know that we are gonna have some folks who want to get pictures. Everybody go to Agnes Scott, ladies. Thank you so much. Next, we have Griffin Middle School, I would like to invite Principal Paul Gillahan.
Or his replacement.
Or his replacement, who's a much better figure.
Hi, everybody, my name's Tracy Efall, and I'm an assistant principal at Griffin Middle School, and I'd like to invite our recipients for Griffin up. Our teacher could not come, so we'll honor him first. Matt Alred was the one that got the Mayor's Award for Griffin this, this time. Matt is a first-year teacher at Griffin, he came from the elementary schools, and he was very, very integral in introducing our team to putting together a new RTI process, a response to intervention process for our entire school, and he has helped us so much with vertical alignment from the elementary school up to the middle school. So we've learned so much from him, he's given so much of himself and his time to our school over this past year, so we're super grateful for Matt, so let's give Matt a big hand, even though he couldn't make it tonight. I would like to talk about Tracy Santos, I'm saving the very, very best till last, I mean, you know, I gotta, gotta save the best till last here. Tracy is our PTSA treasurer this year, she was a foundation board member last year, she is on the ballot for the PTSA president for this coming year, and we're very, very excited about that, we're keeping our fingers crossed and feel confident, hopefully. She's been involved in our STEAM team organization, we just got back from Georgia Tech today, a competition that was sponsored by the Atlanta Braves, our, our school's very involved with the Atlanta Braves, and we're super grateful for that. She's also planning next year a trip to Italy in 2018, actually, a trip to Italy for our students, so we're super excited about that, too. She's our math B coordinator, and I wonder about these two and how much they sleep and eat, I mean, when do they have the time? But she has a brand-new job with an engineering firm, which saw the benefit, she said, of becoming a PTSA partner in education, so that is very, very important. We love Tracy so much and all the contributions, I think she lives at our school more than she lives at home, and we appreciate her so much.
Thank you. Congratulations on the next one.
Saving the best till last. I am so honored and humbled to be able to introduce Jimmy tonight. Jimmy, again, he's one that you see all over the building, he is an amazing person, I know that he's deeply respected by not only his peers, but teachers, Mr. Gillahan, all of us at school, he, I go in and do the morning announcements every now and then, and if it wasn't for Jimmy, I would not know what I was doing. He always preps me and tells me all the things that I need to do, counts me down, and you know, we would, he's our tech advisor, our tech director for WGMS in the morning, so what a wonderful thing. Big and, and most important, he is such a talented individual, and I got to play my French horn in the band, the sixth-grade band today, we're having our concert tomorrow, and so I love Jimmy because he is talented in every aspect of performing arts. He made all-state chorus two years in a row, he is district honor band and district honor orchestra, so he, he plays cello, which I've always wanted to learn how to play, and percussion in band. He is a regional champ at the Cobb Regional Technology Competition. This, he composed a march, he wrote his own march that he used musical software to, to compose. Just amazing. He's on the robotics team, he's an upstanding Smyrna Boy Scout with Troop 11, he's a Beta Club member, he's a budding photographer, and frequently wins the competitions for the Reflections competition. I have to put a plug in for Griffin's musical that's coming up, that's this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we still do have seats available. And Jimmy has been in the musical for all three years that we've been at Griffin, wonderful singer, actor, I mean, gosh. I'm gonna vote for you when you become president one of these days. Anyway, what part are you playing?
I am Pumba, the warthog.
So, yes.
The show is The Lion King.
Very good, very good. So we're super excited about The Lion King coming on. And I have had the privilege of, my office is right across from the theater and I get to hear them practice all the time. I cry at every single musical because it is so amazing and so good what our middle schoolers can do. It's like a little mini Broadway, I promise. So you should come. Tickets are going very fast, so. He also plays for the Youth Symphony Orchestra all three years. So I would like to, just my privilege to introduce you and have you get the recipient Mayor's Award. Congratulations. Canisaw Magnet student here.
I cannot fathom that someone as involved on the stage as he is would not want to be in the picture, so. And here's for, move on to... Thank you so much. Hakuna Matata. We have, I've seen The Lion King a time or two. Campbell High School is next, and we have Dr. Jean Walker.
Thank you. I will ask my recipients to come down at this time. I was about to say I'm the luckiest person in the room because as a principal of Campbell High School, all of these students and parents and volunteers should eventually be coming to Campbell, but then Jimmy blew that line. But good luck to you, Jimmy. Canisaw Mountain's a great school. It is my privilege tonight to recognize our student, our volunteer, and our staff member. So I'd like to start with our volunteer. He's not here, but a family member is here to accept on his behalf. Our volunteer is Mr. Richard Holmes. Mr. Holmes is the father of a student that graduated from Campbell last year. And I have just been amazed to see him in and out of our building after, he has no children at our school anymore, but he still can be seen schlepping concession materials up and down the hallways before and after every basketball game and every basketball tournament, which this is pretty much a year-round thing at Campbell High School. So he is there all the time, except for when he has to go out of town. So our volunteer recipient is Mr. Richard Holmes and we so appreciate him. Thank you for being here on his behalf. Our staff recipient is Ms. Susan Sinclair. Susan is the coordinator of our College and Career Center. She works tirelessly with our students to help them with their scholarship applications, their college applications, and just making those really, really tough decisions. She also coordinates two college and career fairs, one in the fall and one in the spring. When she's not working, she's often volunteering in our counseling office, just helping with registration and anything else they need. And I think she also has another job. Some of you may know her from that job. But as you can see, she is a ray of sunshine in our building and we really appreciate her. And then finally, I want to recognize our student volunteer, our student recipient, Harold Turong. Harold, I got to know Harold, I think, the summer before I even started at Campbell. He has been involved in student leadership throughout his years at Campbell. This year, he really set himself apart. He serves as our Student Government Association President and our school council asked for his assistance in working on getting the vote out for SPOLOST V. And Harold came and spoke to city council on at least two occasions advocating for SPOLOST V. He worked with our school council to create a video that was posted on Wave and I think several other places advocating for SPOLOST as well. So he chose the students that would participate, who would speak in that, and really helped coordinate it. He is a member of the Principal Student Advisory Board, so I get to talk to him frequently. He even keeps me in line. I can remember one of the meetings recently, he said, "Dr. Walker, do we have an agenda?" But Harold is truly a remarkable student. I think he's going to have a great career, a great future in service, in maybe in government. He is one of our IB students in National Honor Society, as I said, involved in student government leadership. He was selected one of Who's Who. Very telling that when he, his name was announced, the entire senior class just burst out in applause, which shows how much he is respected and admires by his peers. He has a 4.705 GPA. And where are we going to college next year?
I'm going to Brown University.
So just a remarkable, yeah, a remarkable example of Campbell students and our school and we're so proud of everything that he's done. Thank you, Harold.
Congratulations. We have one final school to recognize tonight and that is Covenant Christian School, so I would like to invite their headmaster, Dr. Robert Barber.
It's been a great pleasure to hear about all the exciting things and people that are going on in our schools and our community. And thank you, Mayor and Council, for again, reminding us how important it is to honor our educators. I'd like to invite our Covenant Christian School honorees to come forward. All right, I'm going to begin with our staff recipient. This is Kathy Regist. Kathy is consistently going above and beyond her duties as a classroom teacher in order to help her students, coworkers, and her school community. She opted to stay late one day a week and to offer extra math classes to her students. She's taken on Fabulous Fun Friday, a brand-new thing that our school's brand-new headmaster brought their way this year. She's organized and facilitated this year's Missions Emphasis Month and has consistently supported and participated in our Truth Project Professional Development Study. Last year, Kathy started a prayer morning for all teachers to meet early before school. Her Christ-like spirit is evident in her commitment to doing all she can do to make Covenant Christian School and our entire community better and better. So I want to say thank you, Kathy. God bless you. Next, I'm going to honor our student recipient. This is Colleen Cameron. Colleen comes from a family that's a wonderful example of the fruit of investing in your children's education. Her family are volunteers all around our school and I could tell that Colleen is going to be one day a great leader and volunteer in her culture. Colleen is smart and she works very hard. She maintains a cooperative spirit, touched with a sense of humor that's always positive and respectful. She has good study habits, excels academically, and serves as our student council vice president. She's a familiar voice, often greeting and leading us in opening exercises. Colleen is a true and loyal friend to her fellow students. And she's led the way in helping to build and maintain a healthy, Christ-centered culture at Covenant Christian School. We know she's going to be successful wherever the Lord leads her because she's committed herself to consistency in pursuing high standards, as she said for herself, as a growing disciple of Jesus Christ. So it gives me great pleasure to congratulate Colleen Cameron. The testimony tonight has been how little our schools would be if we didn't have parents that were giving of themselves. We'd have people going beyond and sometimes going beyond difficult circumstances that they themselves face so that they can make a difference in our schools. Our honoree tonight, Anitra Lison, I got it right, been practicing, is a volunteer nominee. She's the mother of a first grader and a K-4 student at Covenant Christian School. And she dedicates much of her time and resources to her role as a room parent in both of those classes. She's helped with our Fabulous Fun Friday events. And no matter where she's serving or what obstacles she's facing, such as the passing of her father in this year, she always comes with a smile on her face and she's been a blessing to those around her. Mrs. Lison is a true servant leader in each of her roles as a mother, as a volunteer, and as a dedicated disciple of Jesus Christ. And it gives me a great pleasure to say thank you to her for her work.
Thank you so much. We've got a quick picture for everyone. I wanted to take a moment again to thank Superintendent Ragsdale for being here and our board member Susan Thayer, Dr. Daniel, Mr. Wagner, Dr. Downs, Dr. Walters Brazil. Thank you for being here tonight. And I also wanted to just take a moment to remark that if you have ever had any doubt of what a community can do together for their schools and of what schools can do for a community, you just have to look around this room and you have to hear the stories that have been told tonight about these remarkable students and teachers and administrators and volunteers. And I wanted to take a moment to thank the parents of these students and the families and the spouses of these volunteers and teachers and administrators, to thank their children because they can't do what they do without the support they get at home, whether it's from their parents, from their families, from their siblings. And what you do is commendable and it's remarkable and all of these recognitions are deserved tonight. So thank you so much, everyone, for being here because this has been a wonderful night. Again, if you've ever had any doubt about how incredible our schools are here in Smyrna and the kinds of special and unique things that are happening, you just have to see these parents, see these teachers, see these principals, and see these children because they really are going to be dominating all of us one day. So it's good that we're recognizing them, that they'll remember us when they're successful. But it's also good to see, it's amazing seeing these kids as they have come up through the elementary schools, through the middle schools, through the high schools, and on to some incredible futures that they have in store. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. On behalf of Mayor Bacon, who I know is, he does not like, this is the fun part of being mayor, he does not like to miss this kind of thing. And I know that he wants to send his best wishes and congratulations to all of you here tonight. Thank you so much. [applause] Time to go back to school.